Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to Centro's public hearing for a proposed fare restructuring. I'm going to give it a couple of minutes and allow other individuals to log on before we get started. Give it a couple more minutes. And we will begin. Okay, it's now 12:05. I think I will begin the public hearing on our proposed fare restructuring. My name is Steve Kegel. I'm the Vice President of Communications and Business Planning at Centro. Also joining us today from Centro is our CEO Brian Schultz and our Deputy CEO Christopher Tough. We also have a handful of staff members who are also participating or at least listening in for today's public meeting. And this is the first of two public hearings today for Syracuse and Onondaga County. There'll be another one tonight at 6:00 PM. If you know somebody who cannot attend this one, you certainly can reach out to them and advise them that there will be another one tonight at 6 o'clock on today's, on the proposed fare restructuring. It'll be the exact same presentation that we're going to go over today. We'll begin with an overview of the proposed changes that we have put forward. We would ask that you can submit a comment at any time by using the question feature in the meeting control panel, which is on the right-hand side of your screen. Please limit your comments to the proposed service changes only. Responses to the submitted comments or questions will be addressed at the conclusion of the presentation as appropriate. And feedback will be accepted through Friday, February 11th. If you know individuals who can't attend either of these public meetings, they can reach out to us on social media, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, at GoCentralBus. You can leave a message, call us, talk to a customer service representative at 315-442-3400. You can write to us at Centro at 200 Cortlandt Avenue, Syracuse, New York, 13205. And we still take faxes, 315-442-3337. Again, we will accept all comments through February 11th. So why the changes? Well, as you may know, have heard, you're here because you know that we're decreasing the cost of a fare in Syracuse from $1, from $2 to $1 for our basic adult fare. It's number one, it's to entice more riders. We are in the business of moving people from point A to point B. As you may well be aware, ridership is down due to the pandemic. And we have put together this plan in essence to help entice people to our system. As most people, the overwhelming majority of individuals will see a reduction in their transit costs. It also allows us to put together fare parity. And this means that all of our prices will be the same for all of our city services. So this is something that has not been the case forever. The cost of a ride in Syracuse, Auburn, Oswego, Fulton, Rome, Utica, it'll all be the same. So the cost of a bus, the cost of a driver, everything's equal across all of our properties. Now the cost of riding our buses will be the same as well. These passes, it's universal pricing, so the passes will be universal. So a pass that you buy that you can, that you use in Syracuse can be used in the city of Auburn or in the city of Oswego or anywhere you may go and need to use the Central Bus Services. There is an exception of our commuter services, which I'll go over in a little bit. These are the services that get people from Syracuse to Oswego or Fulton or from Syracuse to Skinny Atlas and Auburn. We've, in those particular services, we have reduced the fare zones from three or four fare zones down to two. It'll either be a dollar fare when you're riding within the city of a particular choice. But once you begin the commuter service and cross a certain line, that fare will be $3, which again is down from $5 and $4 from the current fare. We're simplifying our pass options. So we're going to offer three basic passes. They are the day pass. These will be good for 24 consecutive hours of unlimited rides. We have the max pass that is good for seven consecutive days of unlimited rides. And we'll offer the 10-ride pass. These are passes where you have 10 rides. These rides will never expire. And also, we will be able to sell all these buses or all of these passes right on the bus, straight from the fare box. You, just like the day pass we currently sell on the, on the bus out of the fare box, you now will be able to buy your max pass and your 10-ride pass out of the fare box as well. Again, though, you must let the bus operator know that you intend to buy a pass before you put money into the fare box. The technology is such that once money goes into the fare box, the first reaction of the fare box is going to assume that you just want to pay for a single fare. And it will, it'll take the dollar off. And then you will lose the opportunity to buy a pass at that particular boarding. Again, going over the proposed fare changes, the cash fare in Syracuse will go from $2 to $1. The half-price fare for those who qualify will go from $1 to $0.50. Children under six will remain free. Transfers, however, they are being eliminated. We're no longer going to offer free transfers for those individuals who transfer. But what we've done is we priced our passes to mitigate the impact on those people that transfer. In particular, the day pass. The day pass is now going to be priced from $5 to $4. So if you currently use $2 to get to your first bus and get a free transfer to your location, and on the way home, you put $2 in the fare box and get a free transfer to get home, that's a $4 round trip for your day. If you buy a day pass, it's still $4 and you can ride unlimited rides for the course of the day. So it's really, there should be very little impact on individuals who, who transfer on our buses. There's an option for them to keep their fare the same. The weekly max pass, the unlimited ride max pass is being decreased from $20 for full fare to $12. Half fare from $10 to $6. The 10-ride pass is dropping from $18 to $10. And the 10-ride pass from nine, for the half fare, from $9 to $5. Now, the 20 and 30-ride passes, we are discontinuing the sale of those passes. However, if you hold those passes and you still have a bunch of them, they will be, they will be honored. They will work in the fare box for, for a time period. It will probably be a very extensive time period. So I wouldn't worry about the 10 or the 20 or 30-ride passes expiring. But if you want to, we would encourage you to exchange them for new 10-ride passes if you'd like to do that, so you can be assured that they will, they will never, not go, go to waste. Our commuter services, if you take our Syracuse buses to Oswego, the current fare is $5. It's going to decrease to $3. Half fare from $250 to $150. Again, children under six will be free. And again, there will be no transfers. We are offering something new for people who commute these longer rides. And those are going to be day passes and a weekly max pass, a seven-day pass. So if you commute to and from Oswego, there may not be many people who do this, but there certainly has the option. For $7, you can ride as often as you want during one day between Syracuse, Oswego, Fulton, those locations. Again, the weekly, weekly max pass for $30, unlimited rides for an entire week. So if you are commuting every day from those locations, this is a really good, really good bargain. And the 10-ride pass is dropped from $45 to $30 if you commute every day to and from Oswego. And these passes in particular will be sold on the commuter buses. You cannot buy these on the local buses. So it's just something that you have to actually board the commuter buses to get these, these passes that are being sold out of the fare box. So where are the zones for these, we go to area? We had to set a boundary someplace. It's a difficult, you know, process trying to figure out where to put it. We tried to put it in a location where we don't think people are going to take a short trip just crossing that border. So if you, if you travel from Oswego in the green area in Oswego County into the Onondaga County area, just north of Fulton is where the, is where the price change will go into effect. So if you are traveling from Fulton or Oswego and travel to Syracuse, it will be $3. If you're traveling wholly within the green section, it's a buck. Wholly within the blue section, it's $1. And as I mentioned, the same applies for Auburn. I added Fulton here because this is, they're the same fare structure. The current fare is $4, it will go to $3. The half fare from $2 to $1.50. Children under six are free. That's a misprint, it should say six, not nine. Transfers, again, not be, will not be offered. Again, the day pass and the weekly max pass, same price, $7, $30. And a 10-ride pass will be $30. And again, these are passes that have to be purchased on the commuter bus that travels between those locations. We've expanded our Syracuse zone to include, you know, Tully and Central Square, Phoenix and Skinny Atlas. These were previously considered commuter locations. They're now going to be part of the basic Syracuse fare structure. So it's going to be a dollar to all of these locations. And then the, the cost of the day pass and the weekly max pass and the 10-ride pass will be priced as if you're traveling within the city of Syracuse and Onondaga County. So we really expanded the, the basic zone that we're offering the dollar fare. Here's a map of how that looks and how it will work. It's a little trickier if you're traveling along this route. If you're traveling wholly within any of these zones, it's just a dollar. Just within the blue zone, just within the green zone, just within the black zone there, that will only be a dollar if you are traveling to it, to a zone that touches each other from the, the blue to the green or from the green to the black or black to the green. It is only a dollar. If you cross from the blue into the black or black into the blue, that's where the $3 fare will, will, will kick in. So it's only if you're really doing a long haul trip are you being charged the full $3 fare on this bus route. Give you a little closer look at where the actual line is. It's essentially Mottville Road and Old Seneca Turnpike and West Tennessee Street in Auburn, or West Tennessee Street in Skinny Atlas and Fuller Street. So those are where the zones are. Our Call of Bus features for individuals who qualify for Call of Bus, we are again going to universal pricing. Currently in Syracuse, the fares are $2.50 or $3. They will drop to $2 and that will be the same across the board. If you are crossing those zones that we talked about into a $3 zone, the Call of Bus fare will be twice the fixed route fare, which is $6. And again, as I mentioned, we, we eliminated transfers. I wanted to give the public a look at, you know, how many people use transfers within our system. In the Syracuse area, we, we had the pre-pandemic numbers in 2019. About 22% of our individuals used transfers. In 2021, that number has creeped up a little bit to 24%. But again, as we mentioned, we've offered those day passes that will really will mitigate any, any cost increase with any individual who transfers. So they will not see a fare increase if they buy a, buy a day pass. So about 81% of all the transfers within the Syracuse, within the central system occurs within Syracuse. Again, as I mentioned, the day and max passes have been priced to mitigate the impact. And if you looked at overall, the, the entire systems of all the places that we provide service, the overwhelming majority of users are going to see a fair decrease. Some users will see no change in fares. And a few will see a fair increase. Those are in our, our other smaller properties in Rome, Auburn, Oswego, because we've eliminated transfers there and we have not raised the fare. So there could be an impact on riders there. But overall, it's a, it's a, almost everybody's going to see a fair decrease. And as we transition from the current passage to the, to the new passes, if you have Oswego, Auburn, Fulton, Rome or Utica fare media that you've purchased from a store, out of one of our ticket vending machines or anywhere but from the fare box, those passes will no longer work when we make the change. The good news is in Syracuse, all the passes will continue to work. So you won't need to do any exchanging for the fare media in Syracuse. Even the discontinued 20, 30-ride passes, as I mentioned, they will continue to be accepted in the fare box. Shortly, somewhere down the line, you're going to see a pass that looks a little different, has a little bit of different graphics on it. But again, will be the same Syracuse pass and will work in all of our, our fare boxes. Again, if you have a pass that doesn't work for whatever reason, no one's going to be denied a ride. We will, if you have a pass that doesn't work, we will allow you to ride. But we will direct you to a location to replace that pass. You can go to our local central office or you can call a revenue collection department at 315-442-3342. They will be able to mail you out a pass or, or help, have you come down to our offices and pick one up. Again, all passes will be exchanged for new passes. It'll be on a ride-for-ride basis, which means if you have a 10-ride pass that has eight rides on it and you want to exchange it for a new 10-ride pass, we'll give you eight rides in exchange. There will not be any cash refunds for this program. And that's really all there is to it. Again, if there is, if you know somebody who is not here or cannot make the meeting tonight either, you can let them know that they can comment, ask questions on social media via Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. They can leave a message. They can write us or they can fax us again up until February 11th of this, of this year, of this month. So with that, I am more than happy to take any comments or any questions. So let's see, I have one individual asking, first off, I'm very happy about the decision to cut fares and create fare parity across the system. Want to thank you for going forward in this direction. I'm concerned about logistics of putting, work of selling these different pass options out already on our overworked drivers, navigating these seems like it has... Let me see here, I gotta expand this one. I'm concerned about the logistics about putting the work of selling these different pass options on already overworked bus operators, navigating these seems like it has the potential to slow down the, the bus service. The current headways of over an hour and bus, most bus routes I live on James Street are a bigger deterrent than the fares. I'm warning if there are plans to use increased revenue to allow more frequent service on our most traveled routes. I will just address in general speaking, our situation with our, our service levels. We are working very hard as quickly as possible to hire new bus operators. And that will allow us to increase service. In March, we are going to be adding some frequency to some of our existing routes. And that will be apparent as we are finalizing those details now. It'll be some suburban routes, some urban routes, they'll have additional bus trips on that. I would also like to mention that, you know, the, by having fewer passes that are available and simplifying the options for bus oper, for, for customers, we think it actually will help bus operators during the boarding process. Again, this will also allow us to go to mobile ticketing, which is something that will allow individuals to set up an account on their cellphone, on their smartphone, and then bypasses online. And we are currently testing readers within our system. We hope within a couple of months to have mobile ticketing available. So once you have the pass on your, on your phone, just wave in front of a reader, the reader will beep and you'll sit down. So we think that a significant number of individuals will use the mobile ticketing and therefore they will bypass the actual fare box. It'll be a faster boarding process. And we think that will help, you know, mobile ticketing will really be key in helping speeding up the boarding process. And that can help us with our, with our efficiencies within the, within our bus system. Why was the 30-ride pass eliminated? Simply, we're, we're trying to simplify the number of passes that we're offering. And that is going to help us with mobile ticketing and make things simpler for the, for the customer and for bus operators. There are only so many options we can sell on the, on the fare box. So the 30-ride pass, which, you know, it was used, wasn't as popular as the 10-ride, ride pass. But, you know, some individuals did use the 30-ride pass and we understand that. But it was just the, allowing us to universal, give our passes universal appeal. We didn't have the 30 and 20-ride passes in the smaller properties. So in our, in our decision to make it the same fare structure and same options for every property, we eliminated the 20 and the 30-ride passes. See, I agree with the comment about wait times. I agree with the comment about the wait times, really like the idea of being able to ride more because of cheaper fares, but the bus only comes by my house so often as it is. Yes, that's absolutely something that we're working on. Frequency, frequency, frequency. We really like to increase the frequency of our bus service. Mobile ticketing sounds really good. I'd love that. Thank you for the answer on mobile ticketing. I agree that it really helped with the efficiency and loading. Thank you for working toward this, for taking the time to meet with us and answer questions. That's what we do. Well, we wanted to make sure that everyone understands, understands what we're doing. You know, it's a lot easier telling people that the fares are going down. I'll tell you that, you know. So we're, we're happy to, to be able to deliver this news. Trying to, there's that first question that I'm going through. I want to get all of the, so first off, I'm very happy about the decision to cut fares. Concerned about the logistics of putting the work of selling these different pass options on already overworked bus operators. Navigating these seems to, seems like it has the potential to slow down our times. Again, I don't, I don't think that's going to be the case. Are there options in place for machines outside of bus stops? Well, not outside of bus stops, because when you board, if you're at a bus stop, we're expecting you're going to be able to board, to, to pay as you board on the bus. Having multiple machines at multiple stops, the upkeep and the maintenance of those machines gets extensive. We'd rather have put all of our money into resources of making sure we have buses on the road than resources of payment, payment outlets. Because now that we have the option on the, on the, on the bus, we think that will really, you know, meet the needs of all of our users. Drivers also have the option to add time or pay for parking through an app on their phone. I know a pilot fare that we're using up on that shoe route. Are there plans to implement that system-wide? Don't know if that was us. That doesn't sound familiar to me. If it's, if you're talking about parking, I know there is a parking app that's on, that I think it used to be called Whoosh. I think the city's replaced it with a new system. But again, that's how our mobile ticketing will work. It'll be a, you'll have the option just to reload bus fares on your, on your mobile account and pull them up as you need to and just wave them in front of a reader. It will beep and then you'll have paid your fare. Bank cards work with readers too? Not yet. It's something we're looking into. There is a concern with bank cards slowing down the, the boarding process. If you're boarding and swipe a bank card, the bank card, the fare box has to go up and talk to an account to make sure that the card is valid and it has to come back and get to the bus. That has been problematic in some transit agencies across the, the country with slowing down the boarding process. If we're at the hub and you've got 15 people using bank cards all at once, that is, that can be problematic, even, even if it's a tap and go. Not just a swipe, but a tap and go. Sometimes the, the communication between the buses and the banks can really slow down the process. And we really don't, don't like to do that unless we know for sure it's going to be a quick and easy tap, beep and go. We are, we'll lower fares, cost central money. I'm worried about more service cuts. We're able to, we're able to withstand any near-term loss of revenue regarding this change. And I'm, I'm not worried about more service cuts regarding, because of this financial impact of lowering fares. We hope to get many more people riding. The more people that will ride, the smaller the impact on us. And we believe that will be the case. We think a lot of people right now are conserved or are trying to make all of their trips in one trip. Whatever they need to do, they're going out once. We think by lowering fares, people may ride more often and they may have more options to ride more frequently. So I'm not concerned about this impacting us to the point where we have to make more service cuts. Our plan, quite frankly, is to add buses and add service beyond the pre-pandemic levels. The only thing really holding us back on that nature right now is, are the number of bus operators. Again, I would encourage you, if you know individuals that are unable to attend this meeting, that you let them know that there will be another one at 6:00 PM tonight, that they can attend and, you know, see the overview of what we're doing. We're excited. This is good news for us. It's good news for the community. It's good news for, good news for transit users. Have I answered everyone's questions? Have I answered everyone's questions? One individual, thank you for your intentions and event today. Lower fares are a great idea. Great how this may speed up boarding, however, frequency is the real elephant, as we know. I would pay more for more service. We understand that. We don't believe this will impact service. As soon as we get more bus operators, we're, we will return, we will increase our level of service.
Yeah, and just echo what Steve has been saying. I can understand and appreciate the, the frequency issue. We are working on that, but it's simply a matter of bus operators. You know, we, we just, we need more and they're just not there. So if any of you on this, on this meeting know of anybody that wants to be a central bus operator, send them our way.
Another comment, love our bus drivers, they're so important to the community. We agree, we absolutely agree. They do a tremendous job. And a very, very difficult job at times as well.
Yeah, I would second that.
I'm gonna give it a couple more minutes. And then if there are no further questions at that point, we will close the public hearing. Would more drivers mean a lower overall work burden on your current drivers? I don't believe that would be the case. We, you know, the bus operators do the, do the work that they can. And that's, you just simply just can't tell a bus operator they're going to drive more unlimited hours. It does, we, we aren't able to do that. There are limits to how many hours that they can drive and how much time off they need. So simply lowering, having more bus operators does not mean that an individual will work less.
But will allow us to add back service that we've had to curtail.
Okay, last chance to ask any more questions? I'll wait a couple of minutes? Okay, seeing that there are no more public comments, I will thank everyone for attending. And again, remind you, there is another public meeting tonight at 6:00 PM. Thank you very much for your participation and I am officially closing this public hearing. Thank you.